Okay, it is six oh one PM and I'd like to call the January twenty second, twenty twenty four East Line Board of Ed regular meeting to order. For those of you who could stand, ascend for the. First order of business is public comment. For those who come up for a public comment, please state your name and address. And then we have a three minute limit on for each person to speak. Who would like to come up first?
He's going front and center.
Ben Iden. Foster Pond Lanes on Connecticut. I was wondering if we were going to add school soccer, middle school soccer back to the. Middle school.
You're supportive.
Oh, yeah, I am supportive.
Thank you so much.
Good job. Go ahead.
I am I. And of. Twenty-two Laura Hill Drive. Sorry, say twenty-two, twenty-two Laura Hill Drive. And I'm in support of the school soccer program after school for varsity and Navy.
My name is Cashin and fifty South Andrew Road in the antique and I like middle school soccer.
And Cash, you just tell us your last names, so.
Casher.
Thank you, and.
Oldman.
Thank you, just so we have it for the.
I'm Brady Donovan. Twenty-three Sandpiper Lane. And I'm supporting. Middle school soccer.
I'm Evan Stut. Forty Spring Rock Road and I'm supporting school soccer.
Ben Lobeski, thirty R Black Point Road. And I'm in supportive of middle school soccer. They give me a great opportunity for the kids.
Thank you.
Kirk Casher, fifty South Andrew Road, antique. I just wanted to say thank you that you have it on the agenda and you have it on your. In your latest budget, try to add some middle school sports and I think it's gonna be a real benefit to all of our kids. I know we don't have a lot of them here today, but I've spoken to a lot of parents in the community and people are really excited about the opportunities, not just with soccer, but with volleyball and cheerleading. And anything else you can provide for our kids so that when they come home, they don't have to come home from school and be on their cell phones. They can be doing something after school that's productive, that's healthy, and that will certainly help our kids develop both social, emotionally and academically as well. There's a lot of research out there and I just want to thank you for. Having it in your budget and working towards that today. Thanks.
I'm in Trent. Right off the middle and I live at sixteen Lakeview Circle and I support. Support middle school support. And I play football.
Scott Iden, Forest Pond Lane. I've been a middle school soccer coach in Clinton, Connecticut for over twenty-one years. And I could tell you without a doubt that middle school sports are beneficial to the school community, to the kids in general. And any middle school sport added to the middle school, I think, is a great opportunity for all kids. I was at my daughter's basketball game at the middle school today and it was really cool to see high school kids come down. And cheer on their former teammates, you know, we had some freshmen come down and cheer on the eighth graders. And just that extra connection of kids in different grades, it just builds a lot of great, you know, a lot of relationships and good school camaraderie, so thank you.
I I suppose. I think they heard.
Hi, I'm Nat Johnson, two thirty-four Grassley Hill Road. Thank you, board members, for bringing this to the agenda. Just want to echo what the kids have said and what Kirk and Scott have said before. That I'm in support of this having middle school sports. Any any middle school sport in addition to what's offered right now that you could offer would be, I think, really positive to the school community. Especially for what Kirk said about having something that the kids can do immediately after school, that's a great benefit for for our kids. I have a sixth grader and a fourth grader. And I'm involved in the Eastline Soccer Association, so the non-school affiliated soccer program in town, and I think. This would be a great, I think the middle school sports would provide something a little different in that the timing of the practices is different. And it would provide a little bit more accessibility for kids who can't make those later practices that we have. I think it's just a, there's not, it's not completely overlapping, so I think it'd be a really good addition.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment or yes? Not hearing any, we're gonna close. Thanks, everyone. Really appreciate hearing from you. It does help us. As we start going and making decisions and move down the line, so really appreciate, really appreciate all the students coming here to talk, so I appreciate that. Next, we have approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the January eighth regular meeting, Board of Ed regular meeting. Any changes, comments?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the minutes of the January eighth meeting.
Further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Hey, raise your hand, Joel, thumbs up. The opposed abstain.
She moved in the block.
Which were you, which are you?
I'm in favor.
Okay. So you could do the electronic thumbs up or a thumbs up picture, either way. That helped, that we'll pick it out. Okay, minutes are approved. That we move on to special reports and we have Daylin here, our high school student update.
Um, not much went on because we pretty much had exams all week. So exams are going on, A one through B three is complete tomorrow is B four and that's the last exam. And a lot of people were relieved that it's over because it's just a bunch of crunch time because you're studying for. One test after the next and a lot of people are happy about the snow day and. Because they gave extra time for studying. Juniors are meeting the DJ for winter ball and their prom the twenty-fourth at Port and Starbird. And that's where they'll be having the prom. Crew is still having their fruit sale fundraiser and that ends at the beginning of February. Tom Matlock was voted ECC athlete of the week as he's broken multiple, or just one, but he's broken it multiple times. School records for shot put and he's currently sixth in the nation. Abni Cabra was regional finalist for Coca-Cola scholarship. After that interview, she could potentially win twenty thousand dollars in scholarship money. Winter ball is set for February third, seven to ten. A lot of prom planning is beginning. Both classes have started prom dress pages on Instagram to make sure no one gets the same one. There's gonna be a meeting about inexpensive options for the colleges Wednesday, February seventh at the Public Library. And semester one officially ends tomorrow and then the next day is the beginning of semester two, so that's exciting. A handful of seniors have started committing to colleges. And then the Miracle League is having a fundraiser where people can wear jerseys to school and donate money to move on to phase three of building a fully accessible playground on the ninth of February.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
I don't think we have a selectmen representative. So we'll move on. We have a consent agenda item.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as posted.
Those in favor, say aye. Hey, I got it. Yes. You see Olivia, I didn't, Olivia thumbs up? Okay, thanks. Opposed abstain. That agenda passes, the consent agenda was approving the Board of Ed twenty twenty-four committee assignments. We discussed it. In previous meetings and this was just formally approved. Across the board, the assignments. Okay, we're now on to discussion action items and the first order of business is to bring out the athletic director update. Kevin Markku will give also a discussion on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five middle school sports as part of.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody here. I'll start with an update first before we start talking about middle school sports. Winter sports, as you know, is up and running. We have two hundred seventy-two athletes. Participating across many sports this winter here at the high school, the middle school, boys and girls basketball. Varsity JV team down there. Social media continues to grow. If you're not following Killian. My apologies. Well, you could follow Killian Athletics if you want to. Eastline Athletics. There's the social media on Instagram, which is pretty much daily, including ten pitchers, Facebook. Today was a huge Facebook post. Going back, quick recap of, pretty detailed recap of the week before. And Twitter is every morning as well and quick updates, so. That is growing tremendously. Please continue to like and share those and tell everybody about those. So they continue to spread the great Eastline brand across, really reaches across the world, so very excited about that. A couple other updates, the scoreboard, as you know, we're putting in a, we have ordered a baseball, have contracted with a company for a baseball scoreboard. So that is moving along very nicely. We have ten sponsors that are secured, signed deal and paid. There's another four that they're working on and then talking with the company today, it looks like. I don't have a delivery date, we'll be ready for the spring, but it also looks like that will be able to generate four thousand in revenue even this year alone, so it's, that'll be a nice little moneymaker. Even this year and beyond, plus a beautiful, nice new scoreboard, pitch count up to date with everything that is required. You may or may not know that we have signed a school deal with BSN, a school and all school deal for uniforms. And as part of that, a huge benefit to that is a rebranding. And so as I've had conversations with many people. One thing that struck me when I came here to Eastline was the logo. Logo was not consistent, the colors weren't consistent, the font wasn't consistent. And those are all things that are very important to me that I shared when I interviewed. And so we are working by signing that deal, we have access to what's called Varsity Brands Impact Program, which is a fifteen thousand dollar service. That they provide for us for free. And they also provide us ten thousand dollars in branding items once we get the brilliant, the colors and the font and everything complete. And so we have a small team right now working on that, just started that last week. It's about a four to six week process and I'll be sharing that with Mr. Newton, Ms. Kelly. And some other folks to to move that forward and get all the approvals for that, so very excited about that. So that's the update. Any questions about any of that first before we move on?
Sorry, so Kate and then Jamie.
I just think it's a big job that everybody is doing as far as the promotion and. I enjoy following the Instagram and the Facebook and all that, just wondering who's taking that on and how does that work?
That's me. And me, although I shouldn't say it is me, but it's not me alone. I depend a lot on the coaches, so for example, track was at. They had a developmental meet in Providence this past weekend and I asked the coaches to give me a, just a rundown of, you know, a recap of what happened in the results. I have parents that I partnered with that I steal their pictures off of Facebook and they're okay with that. So it's really me kind of organizing all that, but there's a lot of pieces to it and I also have. A leadership group of students here at the high school that have, they're kind of in charge of a sport, reporting and getting pictures. You know, the sports that, like swimming is very rarely home, gymnastics is not really home a lot. So I need, I get help from a lot of people to update that.
Well, I just want to say I really appreciate your work on that and just wondering, have you gotten permission from everybody before you're posting all that and the liability factor that goes with that? Has that all been cleared?
That's a great question. So we have a list. Terry, of course, is wonderful and she printed the list. That are, that have, I guess, checked off the box that says do not print or, you know, do not publicize. And so we've really cleaned that up and what I found is a lot of those, now the kids at the, at the high school. They've checked that box off years ago and so, for example, our Sean McCauley is a tremendous runner for us and. We reached out to him and his parents because he was not able, he had checked off the box that he didn't want his information. Publicized, I'm saying that now because they've changed it, so it is public and they weren't even really aware of that or didn't remember that and so we have gone through that list, so yes.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Just, you know, Terry Mothe is the secretary in the athletic office, who does a great job and a lot of work to support Kim.
So my question is about the rebranding. When you say rebranding, I mean, you don't mean like getting rid of our Viking and.
No, I know.
I'm just making it work.
The logo, the name, no, not, not the name. The actual logo itself, so the Viking logo is the minute, the one that I see the most is the Minnesota Vikings logo, so there's copyright issues there. I've actually reached out to the Minnesota Vikings and asked them. They didn't say no, they didn't say yes, but they didn't say no, because there's actually, there's precedence of high schools and youth programs using it without the NFL going after them. It's not like we're profiting, you know, making a million dollars off it, so they actually didn't say, we can't give you permission, but. You may run into problems with vendors, you know, uniform logos and such, and so it's, it's. It's wiser to move past that, I think. So not the name, just the image itself and there's a lot of ideas there. And the fonts and the colors, I've seen interlocking yellow and different fonts, so.
Making sure we're not. Changing. Eastline, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe I could just have a, can you, let me talk, you've been here. Five months, give or take, six months, what's it been, six months, maybe six months? What are, you know, what are some of the things that, you know, you've seen good progress and you've seen a lot of change and things and what are some of the challenges for you and? What you see going forward? Maybe just talk about the balance of that.
Sure. So. I thought, so climate and culture were two words that are near and dear to my heart and that the interview committee certainly talked about. You know, a lot. And I liked students involved, I liked them loud, I liked them in the game, but I also like them to be appropriate and so. I found, I guess, early on in the fall, that there was a lot of work to be done around that. And I think part of that work surrounded around that leadership group that I had, so we have twelve or thirteen juniors and seniors. That we attended a sportsmanship conference that CIC put on, we meet fairly regularly, it's, it's a little bit difficult with days, you know, with the weather and exams and such, but probably every other, every other week. And we talk about themes and appropriate behavior and that, and you know, those kinds of things. And so I feel like. And I was actually just reflecting at the last basketball game, basketball can get a lot more animated, everything's on top of everybody. And I almost felt like, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with kids that pulled them in my office and, you know, just in that dialogue. And I almost feel like now we've gone too much of quiet at the last game, so we had a game against Woodstock on Fri- on Friday night. We had youth night, the youth were, you know, very animated and loud and they were awesome and our students were sitting down like. What's going on here? You know, careful what you wish for kind of thing, so. That has been a lot of work. The parents, to be honest with you, in the bleachers has been a lot of work. And I feel like we've made a lot of progress in the fall on that. Behavior specifically, so very proud of that. One of the kind of tangible things that I see here is the physical. Part of the building, the athletic wing in the facilities. Anybody that will listen to me, I share with them, it is not up to par for what I believe Eastline Athletics should be offering their students. Clearly, we know about the turf field needs to be replaced, but even beyond that. Some of the feedback that I got from parents and athletes from the fall, so I sent out a survey to just a couple of quick questions, just to get some feedback. We had to cancel several practices of sub varsity teams because the fields were, they're just, they're not good fields, they don't drain. There, we get a storm, any kind of rain, they're closed down for days. The football practice facility is be well below par. For what, you know, we expect our athletes, again, I, you know, my philosophy is we ask them to do a lot, we should be doing a lot for them. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done around the facilities, in my opinion, and again, that brings that, that speaks to climate and culture, you know. The locker room is. Not good at all. There's, there's no pride in that locker room, either locker room, there's nothing, you. If you walked into that locker room, you wouldn't even know you're at Eastline High School. Other than there's maroon. Lockers, the ones that are still there, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done there, I believe, but. You know, we. Slowly but surely, we'll start with this scoreboard. Keep plugging away from there.
At least just. At least and then like, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate your candor and you're sharing. I had a follow-on question, I think probably to Eric's a little bit around the. About the culture and climate and, I mean, you're talking about kind of behaviors and all of that. What does, is it the leadership group or what does that? Communication aspect look like? How does? How does the work that you're doing there kind of get cascaded around and shared and?
So a couple of different ways, great question, a couple of different ways. So in any student section, there are leaders there. There are. The folks that are starting the chants who, you know, and you. You figure out who those kids are and you start with conversations with them. Some of them are in the Viking Valley, you've heard of Viking Valley, I'm sure. The person that's in charge of Viking Valley is in the leadership group. And so he takes our message, it's not just my message, it's the message of the group, shares it with all the kids in the bleachers. I also depend on him and he's, it's, he's done great work for me to put out PSAs about behavior, so he has these. He has many followers, more followers than ELPS Athletics. And so he'll put together a PSA about appropriate student behavior at a game, clean up your section, stuff like that, and he posts that. And so that message continues to get shared and I, I've seen it, it's been very successful, I've seen it, you know, in other places that I've worked at. And as long as that message is consistent. You know, it starts to sink in and then you drill that down to share that with coaches, the head coaches, and the head coaches share that with. The players, the football players are at the soccer games, the boys, you know, boy soccer players at the football games, so they're all. Kind of intermixing there and if that message is consistent, it starts to take shape. Those are some of my strategies.
Uh, yeah, two quick follow-ups. One, I feel like we have a good window into kind of how you're planning to. Support and boost culture and climate with students. You mentioned that parents was also a focus area. Curious to hear a little bit, I know you have your student leadership team, but you said you've been doing a lot of work on the parent side of things, what exactly that looks like? Then, yeah, I have one other.
Bad habit of cutting people off, I'm sorry, because if I don't think about it, if I don't say it, I usually forget it. So quite honestly, it's holding them accountable. Right, so the message that I, and I don't know if this happened or didn't happen before I had gotten here. Was that parents were not being held accountable, that you buy a ticket and you think you, you know, just affords you the opportunity to just. Badger officials and coaches and players, et cetera, et cetera. And so just as the conversation that I've had with students. Suspended four parents in the fall and that it was a phone conversation with me having an adult conversation with them. And they were suspended for a game, so four parents did not see their child play. In an athletic contest in the fall and then. That message spreads like wildfire, right, so. One parent is not going to go to a football game. They tell another parent, et cetera, et cetera, so again, setting the standards, having expectations, holding people accountable. Now, you know, speaking, you know, taking action for what we believe in.
And then question two, as you had mentioned, as far as facilities go, you reference fields and then locker rooms. You have kind of a stacked ranked list of your top three to four priorities. That you think are most urgently need to be addressed.
I do, yeah.
I do, yeah. But you're on the spot, but.
It's budget season, so the turf field, the main turf field is number one for sure. Some tracks, some track, track needs renovation. The second thing that this school district needs, in my opinion, is a second turf field. Okay, so I kind of model our program and any. Schools that I have a lot of respect for that have athletic programs, one of those is Hand, right down the road from us. They have a incredible, and they have outstanding facilities to go along with that. And so if you travel down ninety-five south Guilford to turf fields and you just keep making, you forget about the schools down in Greenwich area, they have. Three or four turf fields, but another turf field would alleviate, alleviate all of those practice, Kansas practice, you know, bad weather. And from what I told, I haven't been, I haven't dug completely into the budget of how much money they're spending on those grass fields in the back. But it's, it's a pretty good number, I think, and a turf field is, you know, I've done all the numbers for a turf field, I put it in another district. The savings over the long haul is, it's just, it's just a no-brainer, so that for sure. That's number two and there's a really long list, actually, but. I in the sky dreaming, a field house would be tremendous. I don't know that it, there's a. Is there a need for it? It would be wonderful, right, so nobody has a field house around here, like that kind of field house, we rent Coast Guard Academy. The teams went to Providence this weekend and it's a high school, they have a massive field house with tracks and we went to that. So that kind of a facility. A very high priority for me are the teams that have no home, quote unquote, home, so off the top of my head, wrestling. Wrestling has no home. They are, we were looking at some places this winter, it hasn't. Happened, hasn't come to fruition, there's been some holdups, but they get bounced around. Happened, hasn't come to fruition. There's been some holdups, but they get bounced around. From Willie B Hayes to now they can't go on the weekend. They gotta come here and they're all over the place. So they have no home in developing pride, again, pride and climate and culture. You know, what's the message that we send to them? Nah, we'll, we're just gonna send you wherever. Um, so that is definitely a priority and, um. Uh, the other team that. Has no home either, that is really very, it was just very confusing to me when I got here was softball. The fact that we're shipping softball off campus to play games, that it's beautiful part, don't get me wrong. Um, but again, this is Eastline and how, how are our girls not on our campus on a beautiful field? So we've done designs. I've, I've seen designs where a, up in the back, a turf field can be in. A softball field as well, you know, multi-purpose field. Um, they have those designs, engineers can build it and design it. Um, so those are probably the. Five, if that's five things on top of my list. You're welcome. Questions?
Other questions? Prior to the, we're gonna discuss middle school sports, but any questions on the update? Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, alright. So this is, um, just some talking points for middle school sports. Those of all, I appreciate. Uh, anybody that came here for sure. Middle school sports has been a hot topic since I arrived. Uh, be honest, that, um, when I was offered the position, they said, you're gonna be the middle, you're gonna be the high school. Athletic director and the middle school athletic director. Uh, I was very nervous, to be honest with you, thinking, how am I gonna pull all that off? Uh, in the way that I like to do things and be present and put time in. And then I learned that there's cross-country, boys and girls basketball, and I said, that's it. That's, how is that possible? Right? So, um, the fact that. Those were the only offerings. I thought my, my, my initial reaction was there should be more. Definitely Eastline should be offering more athletic opportunities for their middle school students. Boys and girl soccer certainly became a hot topic issue, pretty much even before I walked in the door, rightfully so. Um, and then I started to just learn. I had to learn a lot about the status of the program, why there wasn't one. If there was a need for one, you know, what, what does that look like? And so I started having conversations with. Players, coaches, community members, uh, Mr. Newton, the principal at the middle school, you know, and a lot of other folks. And then I started to define need. What's the need? Is there a need for middle school soccer? And you had to look at it, I have to look at it in different contexts. So is there a need for middle school soccer to? Middle school sports has many benefits, obviously. The one that maybe not the most important, but one that's very important for a high school athletic directors, a feeder program for your high school programs. Right? And I tell anybody that we talk about, then I talk about is, these are varsity sports at the high school. There, it's incredibly important to win, uh, certainly. You know, may not be the most important thing, but, you know, I made it clear in my interview that winning is, is a high priority for me, at all sports. And so was there a need for middle school sports to provide success at the high school? And the immediate answer was you just won a state championship without a middle school program. So the immediate answer was no, I didn't think there was a need. There's a lot of opportunities in town, there's travel, there's rec, et cetera, et cetera. Then I started to dig a little bit deeper, right? And look at it from an educator's point of view and the benefits that. A middle school program would provide students. And so these are just some talking points here. Our current offerings, cross-country, as we said, cross-country, boys and girls basketball. There is boys and girls swim as well. Um. Cecile really runs that, so I have minimal, um. Oversight of that. And then we have a club volleyball program as well. That's in between after the winter season, before the spring season. Um, and it's, it meets once a week and they kind of are exposed to volleyball. So in the budget, as was alluded earlier, boys and girls soccer, cheer and volleyball. So to make, uh, boys and girls soccer. Part of that middle school program here, just like every other school, the Waterfords of the world, Stoningtons and Fitches, et cetera. Um, cheer as well and, and volleyball. Some costs associated with that. I have those listed. Um, down there, you guys are sure well aware of some of those costs. Um, and then just some rationale. Most schools in our area offer middle school soccer, if not all schools. That experience of playing for your town provides, again, back to we have club, we have travel, we have all these high-end. Programs, but there's certainly something to be said for putting on an Eastline uniform. You know, in the, the sets of pride that that, uh, provides for kids. Um, I did hear from many parents and this is certainly something I didn't consider, uh, uh, early on that. And I, I mean, I knew that travel soccer is quite expensive. Uh, so this provides another alternative for families, you know, somebody. You know, in conversation like, well, why do we have to pay to play soccer? We are a town. We are, you know, a public school. We should be providing that opportunity for those students at the high, at the, uh, middle school level. So it's another option for those families that either can't afford it or don't make those teams. It's an opportunity to develop the confidence, pride of being on your school team. And then of course, chair right now is a, is they meet, they're, it's really part of the youth program. So we're looking to make that a much more structured. Program. There's a, a plane, a plan for that. Provide a more structured program to prepare them for high school. There's competitions at that level that they can participate in. And volleyball as well. There's a small number of schools in the area that have. This type of program. It's not a full season, which requires officials and, you know, all those, they, they practice. A couple of times a week. The other schools, the format they have, they practice a couple of times a week and a couple of schools host tournaments, which we would certainly be willing to host tournaments as well. To give those kids an opportunity to play against other schools rather than just. Eastline middle school kids playing against Eastline middle school kids. Um, so those are some talking points and rationale for being in favor of that. There are obviously some challenges, uh, some that happened in the previous attempt to do this, but I think. Again, from learning about what happened there, there were some, um, this managerial or. Just the way that it was set up, it was almost set up to fail. One of the challenges is having enough time to promote market sports teams to fill that, uh, to market and fill those teams. And I think that was one of the obstacles that was presented to the group, the, the organization last time at the middle school. Is that it was at the eleventh hour, quote, at the eleventh hour, and kids are already on travel teams, kids have already made commitments. And there was not enough. Kids at that point left over to play to fill those spots. Um, finding coaches certainly is a challenge. Again, with enough time, confident that that can, uh, happen, be overcome. Securing a field, I know there's a field there, just matter of coordination, not that it's a challenge that can't be overcome, but it is. Some coordination involved there. Um. Other things that are, were concerned to me. Is at the high school, there's a rule that if you play high school soccer, you can't play soccer during that season. If you play basketball in the winter. You can't play on another basketball team. Those rules don't apply at the middle school. And so. These kids, many of these kids will be playing. With school and then with a club and a team. So there's a, a lot going on there. Which is good and bad. You know, a lot of parents look at that a lot of different ways. Concerns I have are, are possible burning out or reuse of specific sports. Uh, muscles, but these are twelve, thirteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen year old kids. So. I'm sure that that can be something that's closely monitored. Uh, something that is certainly a concern is. Joining the middle school team. You're also on a club team. You miss the middle school practice, go to your club practice. And I would certainly suggest that if we go this direction, that your school team. You sign up for your school team, that's your priority. You don't miss a practice, you don't miss your school team game or practice to go to your club. Even though your club team is, you know, a lot of money. Um, that would be, have to be the priority. We'd have to work around some rules and contracts with parents and just making sure that they're aware of that. And lastly, uh, supervision from me. Think one of the challenges when people ask me, you know, about this position, it's great, love being here. There's a lot going on and I tell people that I've struggled with my, uh, responsibilities at the middle school and I told Claudine this, Jeff. There's a basketball game today down there. Like I went to gymnastics, you know, there's always something going on here. If there's something going on at the middle school and. You know, I don't know if priority is the right word to use, but. When people are in this building here, I need to be here. When they're on our, our fields and such, I need to be here. And so. Um, looking for support for, uh. Ex- if we're expanding our programs down there, I would be looking for some support in the sense of a stipend, assistant athletic director. Uh, moving forward to help, um, monitor that, to make sure everything is, you know. Being, uh, you know, they're following the regulations and the rules and the safety. You know, es- essentially it's a liability thing. And so I can't be everywhere at once. Everybody sees how much time I physically am here at the high school and I love it, but I can't be in both places at the same time. So those are one of my concerns. So that being said, I know I spoke with Claudine many times. She's in support of adding these sports. Clearly, the community is in support of adding these sports. Um, I know you've put some money into the budget. And so I would, uh, also tell you that I'm in support of adding sports. You know, this being the start and then continuing on because I'm sure that there'll be other. Sports and families that are saying, well, let's add, you know, we have no sports in the spring right now, middle school. There's not any sports at the middle school, not one. Um, that's a concern. And certainly a school like Eastline Middle School should have something, if not track. That's where I'm at with this. Be happy to field any questions.
So there's, might be a lot of questions. I'm not really sure. So maybe we'll. Ask a question. Let's just give everybody a chance to ask and then keep going around till they're.
Yeah, I only have one. Um, thank you for putting this together. I'm really excited about these, uh, proposed additions. Quick clarifying question is participation across all sports, five through eight, for certain sports, uh. Like, are all grades included across all sport offerings?
Right now?
Uh, right now and then proposed for next year.
I don't see why not. I don't, you know, I haven't, uh. We, we should not include, you know, there'll be a trial, there'll be more kids that try out than there are spots. So there'll be cuts. I would imagine there were cuts in basketball. So there, um.
And are all grades currently invited to participate across all middle school sports?
Yes, they are.
Cross country.
For, for cross-country, um, all grades participated for that, for basketball, there were the tryouts. Um, and you know, as Mr. Mark who said, there were a certain number of spots that were available. And so it was, it was predominantly the older students that did try out.
Basketball, six.
Six through eight, six through eight.
I did not, my fifth graders weren't allowed to try out.
Five through eight for girls, six through eight for boys.
But next year, your proposal would be five through eight across all sports?
If, if it's up to me, I would have everybody try out and then you pick, you know. And if there's a fifth grader that can play and hang, why wouldn't we?
Questions? Thank you for putting this together. I, I'm, I'm really excited to see that we are doing this at the middle school level. I have two questions. One is a clarifying question, which is may, may, maybe you do by ignorance, uh. But when the middle school team competes, which league do they compete? Is it going to be the same league that these traveler or, or club teams compete or is it different?
Um, the, there's a middle school conference with, uh, Waterford, Stonington, Fitch. You know, the, the, the local towns, basically it's the E C C, Eastern Connecticut Conference that the high school competes in at the middle school level. Isaacs has a, has a team, um, ledged. Um, right now it's a ten, um. I believe it's a ten game schedule for soccer, the one from last year that they had. I looked at the middle school, it's ten game, um, and it's the schools that are. Basically within, you know, driving distance of here. They're not going to Hartford or, you know, they're not going too, too far. But there is a conference, they have a championship, they have playoffs.
Alright, so it's, okay, so they can, they can play on, on another team, but they're not going to be in a situation where they're playing for. The Eastline Middle School team and.
Against the team that they are on.
So that, okay, so that's definitely, thank you, that, that's good. Create some problem, yeah. That's good. Uh, second question is, is, and I'm, this is only a curiosity question, you, you know, you have, you have some. Proposed athletic additions and you mentioned there's nothing in, in spring. How, how did you arrive at this, this list of, of? Um, from communication, from the community, quite honestly. Yeah, you've got something in that myself, yeah. Alright, now that, that's all the, I mean, uh. Not, no, nothing being available in spring is something. That does bother me, but that's, that's okay. We'll, you know, we'll figure that out. Thank you.
I have a bunch of questions. Maybe I'll, I'll ask one or two and then, so. Maybe I was the one who had all the questions and I didn't want to take up all the time. So I think my first and, and largest concern and I'll, I'll, so. I love the idea of middle school sports first and foremost. I think. I'll put my parent app head on for a second. So when my three children went through the middle school and there were. Basketball, cross-country. Basketball, cross-country. Um, in that time, and then they also played other sports. One of the things even just, so I take, I'm gonna take soccer for a second. So my son played, um. Eastline youth soccer, um, travel, whatever. And then he also played southeast, the regional soccer for a couple of years. And I, I kinda, I reflect back, it's kind of a parenting mistake. Uh, one that you, each one individually sounds like a good idea. And then when you see what happened. Is he had practiced every single day of the week and on weekends he'd have three to four games. And a kid who loved, loved sports, I mean, plays, ever played everything. He was like. You know, dad, I gotta go to practice again, you know, I gotta, and, and you win a game or you lose a game and you're like, oh, I got two more this weekend. Who cares? Or not, you know, you just lost that like fire and, uh, energy of like, I can't wait. I mean, games is like, should be, I can't wait to play a game and so it started losing that. And I saw that also in like AU basketball and other things where he starts thinking. So one of my concerns with, with soccer in particular, and I'll talk about others, is. Are there students that are gonna play middle school soccer, Eastline travel soccer in? You know, there's southeast and there's other pro, it's expanded and there's a lot of other programs now, but in, in kind of some type of regional. A U type soccer. And. I, it's not my job or our job to, I mean, parents need to make their decisions for their kids. So that's not my job, but I just. It, I could see, I, I guess we just need to make sure. Parents and students really understand that if they're committing to three different programs. Um, I saw it of coach, coached eighth grade basketball for a number of years and we had. Kids from Salem and, and Eastline were playing middle school and we'd have a practice and they'd come a half hour late to our practice or they'd miss our practice because they had a game. And so I mean, so now we only have practice two days a week and we're not even getting our team together. So there's some coordination. With the youth programs as well, just to make sure that there's not the consistent overlap and losing and. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't have an answer for it, but it's just, it's a concern, um. Especially for the sports where we have big youth programs, because we didn't mention lacrosse or baseball. Which we both, we have big youth programs. Those are both spring sports, you know, would we have, should we have lacrosse or baseball team? In, in the middle school. And I don't know what's offered across other districts. So, you know, for me, things like volleyball. We didn't mention field hockey, field hockey. I know there's competitive cheer, I'm less, I'm less knowledgeable here, so I'll be honest, but you know, where, are there sports? So I love the idea of middle school sports. Are there sports where you mentioned it's a feeder program? Are there sports where we don't have feeder programs? Um, you know, if we have sort of a club volleyball that doesn't, I mean, if, an organized volleyball, both boys and girls. I know N F A has a boys varsity program for volleyball. I don't, and was that something we would entertain? As you know, whatever and feeling, so I don't know, I don't know what to do with it, and maybe it's something for you to think about or consider or or. Like what are the right sports, and I hear the the interest. Of the athletes of of potentially for soccer. But it is a concern, because there's so much, it's all in the same season, it's all in the fall, if you said we did spring soccer. For middle school, which I don't know if that, that would be really interesting to me, uh, because that would kind of separate. Um, the seasons, so that's that's just one, just. General uh concern, um, not that we shouldn't go forward, but just make make sure we pick the right ones and we have that sorted out and that. Everybody's really thought through the implications of. Okay, I'm not gonna play town soccer, great, you know, I'm gonna play middle school and I can, well, you know, I'm not gonna play town, that's a. Good, you know, and then then that makes sense, I I just worried that. My other, uh, so it was not really a question, just a statement, um. Question about some of the logistical pieces that I I just don't know, so. Do we? After school, we have, do we have a late bus for the middle school, I don't remember, it's been too long.
Day Thursday is the late bus.
Okay, so that.
It's the same.
Practices and in time to so that they can catch them, so that that we would continue for the all. For spring or whatever, and make sure that the practices coincide with that there's a late bus for kids to get home, because that that would add another. Complexity for.
We we do have the bus that runs throughout the year, they don't run, the late bus does not run on a Wednesday, because their staff has a commitment for faculty meetings. And the late bus does not run on Fridays, but the commitment is three days a week for for the uh running of the of the bus for pickup for students.
And then um, and then what happens if it rains? On a, you know, and you have to cancel practice, how how do we, because basketball.
Communicated, um, Miss Anderson, as a process, will quickly usually communicate to families through infinity campus and get that message out. And then there's typically an announcement made in the lunch waves, for example, if we're gonna make the decision early enough in the day to announce it in the lunch wave. Where there's an all call made prior to student dismissal, so that the students here have a sense of communicating with families of what plan media is and where they're going.
Okay, I want to see all the parents.
And that that goes along again, one of my concerns with help. So we're canceling the middle school sports, the high school's probably back to the turf field when it rains, I've never seen. A sport have to cancel on a turf field, here we do because it's it's poor quality. Um, tho- those are, that's ours in the works, you know, it's not just I hit a couple of buttons and the game's canceled and postponed and everybody. There are a lot of moving parts, you know, a lot of coordination. And to get to, you know, all of that at the high school and then go to the middle school and work with that, it's it's a lot of work.
So my other comment. Let me, it's all, it's my last one, so I'll let that I've gotten that far, so my other comment in on your last bullet about the assistant AD, I mean, I think that. From what I've seen in what from both social media and you, you're everywhere, is you can't be everywhere and I do see. Regardless, whatever we do with the middle school sports, I do see a need for another person. Uh, to help, uh, we haven't discussed that, but I'm just giving my my thought is that it it does seem. You know, with all that we want to drive with climate and culture and being s- being there and right now, and it does seem like having that. Additional person um on the stipend and it's really the after-school piece, um. That seemed beneficial, so that that's.
Somebody who doesn't coach either, that, you know, and be focused, their their time is.
Well, it has to be that, that's their commitment, the commitment is this, um.
So thank you, I love to see this kind of laid out in this way, it helps me sort of organize my thinking and. I know, you know, we're raising this from a largely kind of the um budget season and the budget aspect. And you've laid that out and we're talking about some of the costing, right, and you've raised, you know, even where we may have some gaps with the assistant AD. Um, I mean, I think we're talking about all of this for the right reasons, I want to ask you. What, right, so presuming, right, the proposal kind of moves forward, we have these um. Agreement to get these programs started, what is that, what does that take, so? What does it take to kind of start that process or get it going, um?
First thing would be if there's a commitment and we are moving forward, little boys and girl soccer is finding a coach. Help coordinate and market and PR and to get signups, right, so the. Spring sports coaches right now, they've already, at the high school, they've already communicated with their athletes, they know when opening day is and tryouts and. Team stores and schedule, et cetera, et cetera, so that's the spring, the fall coaches will be doing that. In the middle of the spring season, so the sooner that we are. Be okay to go out and post for coaches and interview and process the paperwork and background checks, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, that really is the first step, in my opinion, um, also letting the the conference know that. Well, we were was asked about earlier, so Mark Romano Fitch, he is the middle school athletic director. Uh, in charge of scheduling for the soccer teams, and so I've asked him, when do you need to know, their schedule's already done. Fall, it's already complete, but they can add us in, the sooner it's better, and so it takes. That all takes coordination and time and communication to do that, so those are really two big pieces. Communicating with uh Parks and Rec about the field, uh uniforms. Stuff takes time, coordination, so. It's again, it's not something I think, as it was explained to me, it was something that was kind of rolled out. Maybe even late summer or early fall when this was attempted in the past, and at that point, it's just not gonna be successful. At that point.
I mean, I think.
Let me answer your question.
Understand, I think the roots of readiness, um, and you know, you're talking about the timing being one, so. Yeah, I think it's and it sounds, I think if I'm hearing it right, but coaches are sort of the first first step in the.
And also getting the word to parents, because it's all, again, it's not fair to parents to say in September, oh, we have a team. And you don't forget your travel team that you paid X amount of dollars for and come play for us.
Kevin, if I can add to that, I think, you know, reflecting last time when we attempted to 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 get it up and running, it was later in the game, so to speak. And I think that 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 is a crucial piece too, is communicating not only to the parents, so in terms of time and commitment. But to the students, so that as a family, they can plan together, um, you know, with regards to. Where students are gonna sign up, where they're gonna play, and what the priorities are, so that this way, they can plan accordingly, I mean, if you have a family that has two, three kids. As as we all know, when we have children, it's a lot of careful, it's a lot of arranging and and helping each other to get our kids to where they need to be, need to be a part of that, so. That communication piece is 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 certainly uh essentially as soon as possible.
Are you calling on me?
Yeah.
Okay, so um, following up on what you had said, Eric, the uh. Balance is really important to me and I really feel like. A lot of kids in these slime, the parents had the idea that perhaps their children were going to become professional athletes down the road. And I'm not really aware, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we have alum who are professional athletes, so. It it's important and we value that, but I think the balance is really important, my kids were very strong athletes, but it wasn't everything. And then kind of going along with that, I'm wondering if there's academic standards or. Um, uh, acceptance, I mean, i- is there a standard that the students need to. Ob- obtain and sustain so that they can participate in all of these school-sponsored sports?
There is a lot of money.
Well, the the standard, you know, is the expectation behaviorally and academically, you know, school is the priority, the academics are the are the priority. It's a little bit different with regards to, I think, the strictness that we're able to instill with regards to the academic component. Always, I mean, we work with our coaches to support our students, to make sure that they have the academic support, um, if there's work that's missing. Um, to communicate to the students and to the families, um, you know, and then we also work with them, you know, sometimes when there are behavioral things that come up. To be able to let the students know that they are representing the base of the school and that's the priority, so we do work with the students, we do work with the coaches, yes.
Well, I I know to that extent, but as does a student ever have? Um, perhaps the experience that they don't play because they're not keeping up and not doing the work that they need to be doing. And the athletics has become a priority for them.
Absolutely, you know, and that's the part of the the piece that we do work with the coaches and making those dis- those decisions. And sitting down with students and having those discussions as well, so yes, there are times where students do not play.
Okay, thank you.
So, let me see if I can try to wrap up, so. I think. Anybody, please correct me, I think we hear general support for moving forward with it, it also seems to Jeff and Kevin. That time is of the essence, um, in that. The budget season is not gonna align with our decision. We need to make a decision on what we're doing in middle school sports before the budget is finalized in in the May, technically.
Give it the best chance.
Yeah, which is what we want. I mean, my personal view is, this is not an enormous amount of money. Um, to do this in in, this is not for decision and action and it's not a voting thing, but do we have general support? Or. Jeff and Kevin and and Claudine to kind of. But think through this and figure out the logistics and how it goes and what's the best way to make this happen and that we support. The budget budget, obviously to a degree, if you come back and say it's two hundred thousand dollars, that that would not be a good thing, but. You know, at at the degree we have, so see Jamie, I see Esteban, okay, Jamie and then Esteban.
So my my hand is. Because everyone who's come into our budget meetings or board event meetings the last year and a half, I would say, has been. Highly in favor of soccer. I haven't heard anybody cheer or volleyball, I just haven't. So is there maybe a phased-in approach? You start soccer and then cheer then volleyball, or is it all or nothing?
Cheer, I mean.
Just because I haven't heard the public's outcry for cheer or volleyball, I've only heard the last year and a half of soccer.
I have been contacted often about cheer.
Okay.
So there's several individuals that, right, right from our coach here at the high school, the need for it, you know, et cetera, some parents down at the middle school. Um, hasn't been quite as, I guess. I haven't had that, I haven't been reached out as much about cheer about soccer, but I have. I do have a full plan for a person who was willing to volunteer this year and. You know, and we just weren't ready to do that yet this year, and I think if we have a plan in place for next year, then it's a paid position and it's. We hire a coach, the whole thing, and it becomes very structured and formal and evaluations, et cetera, um, volleyball. It's more of a conversation, not necessarily with parents, but with, um, there already is a structure there, it's just kind of. Adding a little bit more oomph to that program and not a lot more, just don't play another team. Have practice and structured a little bit differently, uh, incorporate some of our kids here at the high school. Clearly, we have a incredibly successful volleyball program here at the high school, we have great resources in our students and graduates. You know, so why not tap into their talents and then expose those kids to other teams as well, so that's minimal. You know, that's why I put a question mark, I don't even know if they'll have uniforms, they have my t-shirts.
I was coming from the, I don't want you to go out and fuck with soccer coaches, cheer coaches and volleyball coaches, if you haven't heard. From people that they're going to be interested in it, but if you've heard from people and you have people who are interested, then I'm I'm in, but I just. It's a concern that if you haven't, just because. For the soccer and that's about it.
I think we've had much more than more about the meeting, very vocal, um, a lot of support within the last year and a half, two years for the support of that. I have received correspondence from uh uh individuals regarding cheer. I know that it's large in the community and there was a proposal that I did share with Kevin as well, we talked about that. Um, you know, and I think we do right now have the club um volleyball, it is more um. Non-competitive, but more kind of an intramural type deal. Intramural type, you know, that is certainly something we grow, um, you know, I know that there's also been talk about looking to possibly add in the middle school. Level unified sports on some level, I think it's something as as a starting point, you know, we start, uh, we have to begin somewhere. I'm a hundred percent in favor of adding more middle school sports, and I think, you know, um. If we're gonna do something well, we need to take slow bites and we look at um potentially um adding and continuing to increase and. Um, you know, look at where we can add those as we go along rather than just clear across the board everything.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure there was interest, because like I said, we haven't heard it, so if there's interest, then. That's that's great, I just wanted to make sure before he does all the work that there's actually interest in it.
And that's kind of where those came from, that that has been what has been brought forth to us, with a sense of interest level at this point. And we we certainly consider more, as like I said, we we continue to progress and we'll continue offering sounds.
Other added, oh, sorry.
No, I'm glad.
Just a quick added piece, I'm thinking of it too, um, you have a sixty million, sixty-one million dollar budget, you know, as as I said, it's not moving the needle much, you know, at all here. Um, but if, once we put them in, um, we hope that they're successful and I support those. That's it, I don't wanna waiver back and forth every year with, should we cut it, should we not cut it, it's in, it stays.
Yeah, with a true language.
Well, that's all.
Well, basketball.
Been up and down, um, leave it in, let's get it established and go from there, so we we're done conversing about it and we have no support.
So you stole the the thought, I was gonna say, so I'm fixing up a sixty-one million dollar budget, so this doesn't seem like a lot, so definitely uh supportive. But I would like to see, and maybe you know this number off the top of your head, like about how many students total will benefit if we added all sports, like, you know. Ballpark a year, it's kind of a good idea to make an informed decision, like the per student cost, you know, and the crass scheme of things, like. I don't think it will be that much, but it will be uh, it'll be good to know, like, as we make a final decision.
And he just said two hundred and seventy-two kids are participating and.
Just in winter.
Your sports, like, do you think that same number is gonna be at the middle school?
Okay, it won't be that much, so I I. I don't know, somebody here probably knows more than me about a middle school.
It doesn't have a before today, like, just as as we think.
We could keep, that is, we could start to generate numbers to, you know, to keep track, and across country, Claudine has had upwards of between sixty and a hundred kids. But that's one, so that's, again, it's giving kids, as it was said earlier, I think Kirk said, you know, giving kids things to do.
So maybe to close up the topic. Claudine, Kevin and Jeff, you just work work together, kind of move forward, drive what makes sense and just. Kind of work back to us in the next. Months, I don't know what the timeframe, like, what? What did you decide, like, what what are we doing, like, how's this all gonna work?
Yeah, at this point, yeah, we'll start moving forward, um, I would like to, you know, if we if we need to entertain more of that idea of an assistant AD, I think. You know, we want Kevin everywhere, but he can't be everywhere, so I think having some assistance maybe at that at that level, or it might free up Kevin to go down to more middle school. Things every once in a while, if somebody's up in the school, so.
I'm fully, is there anybody concerned with the stipend position? This is like seven, six, seven thousand dollars, this ballpark, just, um. Any concerns of potentially moving forward, if we're adding. Do already a full, full-time AD role and adding a few other sports. We need someone at the middle school, I mean, we we'd need someone who's gonna be there at those similar to what.
I'm fully in support of that, and I know poor Kevin has heard from me multiple. And I keep telling him, I'm not doing my job if I'm not advocating some of the students and our coaches have the support, and I know he can't be every place at once, and I said to him. It it's not you personally, we just, we we need that, we, our kids and our families deserve that.
Yep, thanks, thanks so much. Thanks, everyone. You wanna stay for the budget discussion? Doesn't get better than that. Doesn't get better than that.
Thanks to Anthony.
I feel like kind of lonely now.
Yeah, be at the meeting next, alright, we got one stay.
Okay, um so moving on to the next topic is discussion for discussion information. The twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget discussion follow up. So at the last meeting, people had an opportunity to ask some questions and stuff, and I'll turn it over to Jeff if there's anything additionally you would add. And if you've got any questions. Offline.
Yeah, no, no, um no new questions from anyone, um I do want to clarify because it was in the day um newspaper. That it was proposed that, you know, we had come forward with a five point five. Yeah, so I I she kind of took the the thought process of here's what you could do to get down to a five point five as an idea. But we came forward with a six point zero eight, so just for the public and, you know, this being, you know, on the tapes. We are at a six point zero eight percent increase right now, so it will be up to the board if they want to discuss with those items that I shared, bringing it down further.
Was the five point five, was that the hypothetical if we reduce the health insurance percent?
Insurance and the two two elementary positions.
That are open.
That are not not through attrition.
You do attrition, okay.
Exactly, yeah.
Jeff, what you had presented in terms of class, uh what you did present in class, what the class sizes would be if we did come down the two. And those class sizes would be within the guidelines, all within the guidelines.
And some even below the guidelines, yeah, so we're in very good shape with uh with both the class sizes. Hence, nobody loses their job to retirements, we just wouldn't fill those, you know, those two positions. And that equated out to a hundred ninety two thousand dollars on top of insurance. Um but that would, I would, that would be it, I would not recommend any further um, you know, reductions. Let insurance, we'll have some more meetings with insurance uh tomorrow, that's right, um so we'll get maybe a little bit more clarity as to where that number. Is coming in, did hear again that, you know, we we potentially it's gonna be on the lower end of that three to sevens, that would be very good. But um I think we still want to be very cautious, we're at ten percent of an increase now. Um the idea was for the board to potentially bring it down to eight, but I think we kind of see where we're at, you know, there.
Do we know what the town has?
They say anything, I haven't heard anything from the town.
Their budget process starts kind of, it starts a little bit later. I think I've seen emails go through, he's, they're just, they haven't even sent out their stuff, yeah.
But so just, yeah, that was really, I want to make sure we clarify that we are at still at a six point zero eight percent increase over the current fiscal year. And then the board of it could kind of take it from from there. And we're getting some, we were at the middle school P T A meeting last week, so get some feedback, you know, from parents. We've got the elementary setup, all three elementary setups, we're using those as, um you know, time to share out more information and have some discussions with parents.
I had a question, Jeff. So Kevin brought up. Some small, like small ticket items for the athletics. A dollar here or a couple of dollars.
I appreciate his honesty, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 they are all, and and he did mention the south gym, and if anybody has had a chance. To walk through the south gym, that's in. That's pretty rough shape, I mean, it it's it's pretty rough shape, and that is utilized. Pretty heavily, um especially in the winter, it's heavily, but even in the fall and spring when it rains. Uh and people want to practice, there's only so much indoor space we have, so you you do, they do get pretty heavily used. That's in pretty rough shape, if you get a chance to walk through it, it's worth it, so.
Did it hit your cafeteria during COVID?
It was, yeah, and you set up eighty tables and.
Served a lot of member of the numbers, yeah. So. Or I guess it sounded like everything that. Kevin mentioned would probably be in our capital plan.
Was bigger ticket. Yeah, especially, you're talking, you know, another, you know, turf, turf field and so forth, those are all capital. All right, it's in the capital list, that is something, when I, that's a pretty, it's a nine million dollar list right now, just for the board of that. For all of the, you know, roof projects, uh the pool roof, um so I mean, those lowly, and the center's roof, pool roof, and then. Those are the bulk of the the major items, that's the last tab in your. Uh in the budget book too, I can look at those, but big ticket items, and the senior center has a roof. Project as well, but you know, I don't know why, we met with Dan Cunningham, we've met with Denise Hall. Talked about those capital aims to get them out there to make sure that they're, you know, well aware that, you know, we combine and maybe we bond, you know. Barely minimal impact of taxes potentially, but uh and we get reimbursed at forty, a little over forty percent reimbursement. They're just the roof projects.
Question, budget questions, clarifications, additional. Information that you'd like to see? So if I, if over the next couple weeks, if everyone kind of poured through the budget data, any questions you go. You have, please send them to Jeff, um Jeff and compile them, he can then provide. Written answers for ones that, for all, you know, whoever asks, it doesn't matter who asks a question, but written ones that can kind of provide clarification. If there's bigger questions and things, we can also have the discussion or. Discussion here, some of it might be clarifications or whatever, but we can have add those questions here as well, but. Just so we stand, and then, so our next meeting is the fifth. Right, where we're also looking to do a retreat, right, in a short.
Yeah, we're gonna have, we were looking to have a shorter.
Short meeting.
Meeting in that for an hour.
And then. We should have meetings most of.
Two twenty six, unless you add a special meeting of some sort on the budget, but two twenty six is the proposed budget public hearing. Um and then a special meeting for adoption afterwards.
Yeah, so there's a day off in February, we only have two.
Alright, so do we need? When are, when are people, that when do we need to kind of come together and come up with? Or what we're, yeah, some of the things that we're thinking based on what. Jeff and team have provided, and where are we thinking? I'm just wondering, maybe the fifth retreat, maybe that. We need to defer for that because we. I think we need to have time to do that, right?
Yeah, the timing might be good to, maybe potentially we'll buff on that.
Because we go from the fifth right to the public.
Right, unless you have, yeah, unless you have. You know, again, there's. To me, there's that, you know, there's not a lot of controversy, I guess, in this budget, which is a good thing, but, you know. I just, I wouldn't recommend any further reductions other than what, you know, the two positions and areas wherever you want to put it as as a board and adopt it.
People, okay, if we defer a retreat maybe till March. Cause then we will have gotten through the public hearing. Time to discuss is, it it may not take very long, but I also don't, if we need a lot of time and we should spend a lot of time on the budget, I don't want to shortchange that. Okay. So let's do, let's do that and let's make the fifth, the predominant discussion will be, um maybe. It was a chance to ask questions, go into a deeper dive, see what questions have come in in that time. And so if everyone can do in terms of the work between now and the fifth, is go through your budget book. You know, think about questions, think about things that maybe you you have, want to have further discussion about. And uh we can do that then on the fed, provided to Jeff before, so we can have a. Discussion that he'll have the information, not have to go get the information.
Yeah, but kind of holding up the capital projects too. We're gonna have to have a big push, I think, across the, we might have some confusion where people in town think, wait, we just, six years ago renovated elementary schools and. Why are we asking for roofs now, so just, yeah, what level of clarity do we need to work, you know, to provide with the town?
Anything else on the budget? The next topic, discussion information, current school year budget projection update. We're gonna start including this more regularly in our. Topics, not necessarily meeting, there's something that. Typically we excluded and there's something that we need to discuss, because there's something that maybe not going away, wanted to, or maybe something going very well. This is why I'll let Mariana talk, it sometimes it's gonna be much, much just routine, but just to make sure that we all are, have this information now.
There's um, the state of Connecticut hasn't, I don't know how new it is, but it was brought to our attention, so quarterly, we need to send. We need to do the projections, post them on our website and then also send them to the board of selectmen. So we were doing them, but just not really sending them anywhere and doing them, you know, through F F O, not necessarily coming to the board. So this will be done on a quarterly basis regardless of whether, you know, there's things we need to talk about. Um so the last quarter, we were looking at about forty four, forty five thousand dollars. This quarter, you know, I think we're doing well, um I don't think there's any concerns, issues where um compared to the budget like we had last year. Right now, it's thirty five thousand dollars, we had some additional um tuition and transportation for some special ed students. So that's why we had some savings in other areas, but then unfortunately, you know, we had um, we had a couple. Of expenses in that category, so that's why you'll see that from last time to this time. Our transportation line is over by about a hundred thousand dollars. And our tuition line is over by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um that does include the reimbursement we get from the state of Connecticut that actually Jeff and I were just talking about, we used to get. Like eighty two, eighty three percent on our um excess cost, this um last year it was about seventy percent. And this year, we're projected to get about sixty eight percent, so that's a significant decrease in our. Reimbursement, if we were at our like eighty two, eighty four percent rate, we would have gotten like an extra thirty, forty thousand dollars this year. So that's kind of what it weighs to in dollars.
Consistent across number of towns as well, the percentage has gone down and I've got a call scheduled with representative. To discuss, we need some more, you know, voice and at the.
They changed, yeah, they changed how the reimbursement works, and so now because we fall within one to ninety four of the wealthiest percentile. We get the lowest reimbursement, there's like three tiers, so we're in the top tier, so that's part of. Why our decreases lower.
Many towns are, one to, you said one to ninety?
So while we're in the, we're one to ninety four, there's a hundred and sixty nine. Municipalities, and might be a little bit more with regard, uh not sure where the regional school districts fall into it. So they base it on um the annualized equalized uh net grand list, so it's really based on that.
But it's it's basically like fifty percent.
Correct, we're like, it's between one to ninety four gets sixty eight percent, I want to say we're like fifty seven or fifty eight. Is where we fall.
We were plus twenty one, twenty two, we were eighty two percent.
Eighty two.
We went to seventy percent and now we're at sixty eight percent, so it's continually progressively getting going down.
Yeah, because if there's um, they only allow a certain amount for excess costs too, so that's the other piece of it, is if they. There's too much uh requests are coming in.
Get more money, pardon me.
If we were poorer, we'd get more money, correct.
And the state only put in.
Yeah, right.
They only budgeted a hundred million or something, yeah.
Right, so that's the other part of it is, as as Kim says, they only budget a certain amount, so if they budget a hundred million and two hundred million comes in. Then our percentage will go down even, you know, even more, so.
But my taxes go up, I'm poorer, so.
So, um.
Only fun special ads of the state.
It's our threshold of when we spend.
Any sense.
More than four point five times for pupil tuition, that's how we.
So it's calculated, yeah.
The excess of that, we don't get reimbursement for anything under the four point five, it's the excess. Hence, excess costs.
So, yeah, so I don't know if anyone has any questions, our, you know, electricity is um. I'm projecting that it's gonna come in a little lower, and once I have one more month of gas, I think I'll feel a little bit more comfortable. But I think we'll have a little bit of savings in the natural gas, that seems to be coming down, I just want to see where the month of January. Does before I. Put that in, I'm I'm very conservative in that, um that's it, I don't know if anyone has any specific questions on it.
Thanks, Marana, appreciate the update. That closes our discussion and action items, and we're moving on to administrative reports. Jeff?
Yeah, a lot of men were kind of sucked up in some of the conversations um that we had with clarifying the budgets. One, um as we continue that kind of P R push to marketing and, you know, Kevin was talking about. Take advantage of that community events magazine, back putting, you know, articles in there, so the one that's coming out, I wrote an article, it should be, I think, in February. Um actually, I'm Kevin and having a full time A D, but his, you know, um social media, Instagram posts in there, so maybe, you know. The town can sign onto it too, sort of thing, so that'll help generate some more, some more interest, so that should be coming out, put his picture in there. And uh so look for that in February. Just, you know, the continued discussions, I think, again, with the with the budget, we've already related, there's some pieces I was gonna hit if we missed it, but. We already kind of talked about them, so that's about it, other things, we're in the weekly update, and uh it's kind of a busy week, you know, last week, we had that one. Snow day and delay, we'll see what this week brings potentially, Wednesday, a little bit of ice, but hopefully not, we'll be alright, so. But that's about it.
Thanks, Jeff. And Elise?
Um I attended the state training last week for all district administrators who. oversee the summative assessment um testing window. Um it was intense, there's, oh, there's a lot involved, I'm looking over at Kim because I shared with her the, I don't know, a hundred and sixty. Slide, slide, slide deck, um. So we've got some new staff members, I'm thinking that it's probably a good time to pull in and do some mini trainings for folks and make sure everybody's up to date on what they should be doing. Preparing for that, the good news is that with the C T Seds platform, this new special education platform, there's a lot of integration happening with our. Assessment platform, which makes it easier, less room for error, um for making sure our students have the necessary accommodations and modifications for the assessment. So we're ramping up for that, getting ready to, um you know, the the assessments don't start till a little bit later, but um. There's a lot of work that has to happen now to prepare. Um and tomorrow, we're bringing in um the P E D A committee, um as you're all aware, there are new guidelines on evaluation. Committee's been doing, you know, some some heavy lifting um around decisions with this new evaluation plan. At our last meeting, we had done some work around um moving um from a multi um. numeric rubric to a single point competency, which the state is pushing us to um move in. So we'll review the work that they had done in that last meeting um tomorrow and then move on to goal setting. So we're just kind of taking each component of the plan at all of our meetings, and we've kind of backwards planned it, so by the time spring comes here. We've had um all of the components sort of vetted and built, and then time in between to bring it out to colleagues to get their feedback. Um so that's happening tomorrow.
There's acronyms too, P D A.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Development and Evaluation Committee, just the kind of, we use them.
I know, I'm so sorry.
So I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. That acronym stands for.
Yes, did I use any others acronyms in my. Tonight?
Yeah.
S B A, I think I did, Smarter Balance Assessment, that's the summative assessment that the state requires for us, so.
Any question for Elise?
Can I go back to a question for Jeff? Sorry, a little delayed, I guess, reaction, just about the snow days, um. And if you could talk about um. Scheduling the snow days differently for Eastline kids versus Salem kids and. And what is like. I guess, I didn't really know we were doing that, so I'm not sure what that all looks like, is it, you know. How do criteria for that is is decided, and is there impact at the end and to the, what, I don't know, just talk about it a little bit.
There is, this has become a little bit more, you know, frustrating, I guess, um you know, again, this is my. April first will be the start of my tenth year here, and for eight years, we, you know, that we never. April first will be the start of my tenth year here and for eight years, we, you know, we never really, seventy years, Salem kind of just followed his line, you know, we did, because high school kids always out of the gate early, um. That was with Joe Nofio, Brian Hendrickson, new superintendent, he, um, there's a different philosophy on it, I guess, and and I don't know, I've talked a little bit with him about it, but, um. It doesn't always follow suit now with what East Lime is saying, so. It's a challenge because, you know, I've got, we have, take a hundred and fifty, sixty kids out for Salem. Uh, twenty-four, a hundred East Lime kids and five, six buildings, I, I can't always just go off of what Salem, that starts later too, in the morning, you know, they're in elementary, middle school. Wants to do versus what we want to do, also, I am a, I wait to the last minute, I don't, some people might like this, but I don't like calling it at night, I like calling it in the morning because things can change. Always trying to get the school day in and do it safely. There's a philosophy a little bit more, these younger superintendents coming in that want to call it at night.
Younger ones.
Is driving me a little crazy, but you know, and I'm not, that's not, you know, Brian, just saying that generally, um, they like to, uh, you know, to call it at night, but. And I know some parents love that and it helps, but I'm just, I'm not a fan of it. So I'm saying that you just, you know, that's just how I operate, sort of thing, so I'm trying to work, we're working on, on trying to align better and and figure out ways to, you know, to improve that alignment. Because we don't, it's causing dissension between Salem kids and East Line kids, and we don't want that.
So, so when they, like, if they miss the day, I, I mean, I guess.
They're not held accountable, or they're not, they're not penalized.
They're not, and and right, but they still get, but the number of days is still accommodated because of the way the schedule is built and.
Yeah, yep. So it's, and Deb, I think is Deb, the majority of them, uh, they are here, correct, Salem students, when, if we've had the one, we had one. One day they had to close, I think. Yeah, she's there.
Yeah, I'm here, the majority of them do come in, um, the, the challenge, a couple of times, has been getting them home, but. Um, they do come in and we did accommodate any of the Salem kids with exams as far as providing them with more time if they needed it, if they had missed the the day.
One, one idea was to, um, Brian was talking about, your superintendent, Mr. Hendrickson, superintendent Salem, about the idea of, you know, maybe. Having a bus of some sort that had like a manual school bus, it was parked in a location. When if they had to delay or close and we remained open or had a delay, um, that was different from what they were doing, there would be a bus available for. Student to get on and come to school, so. And the majority of them find, they're here, they find a ride, but. Yeah, Jamie.
I will tell you, we did have this conversation in my house and I explained to my daughter that Salem has different weather.
They do, there's very, it can be different weather there.
They could have a lot of snow when we just get rain.
Yeah.
And she was like, but how, like, it's like, think about where we live, we live closer to the water, so we get a little bit warmer and as you go up into Salem, it starts to snow more. So she was like, oh, but, and then I was like, two different districts, two different superintendents are gonna call things different occasionally, but, yeah. It was.
One of them, so they had, they had to cancel, the last one they canceled and we did not, they had a transformer that blew and there was wire in the road and sparking and so it was, a main artery was blocked off. Um, so they couldn't get, you know, buses through, but, um, so we're. We're working to try and better align and, you know, we just keep hoping it's rain from this point forward.
No more rain, people's houses are getting.
Rain, how's that, light rain?
How about just sun, no. Fun and cold.
So. But I, I've heard, I think, yeah, I've heard that. Was a couple of issues, so. So thanks, Lisa, appreciate it. No, it's a good question, really, we're, we're trying to better.
Well, I know, I mean, I've had, I have been asked, but I have no answer, so I wanted to go, I, I was on my list and I wanted to make sure I asked.
Yeah, yeah, and again, a couple of parents have asked, same parents have asked, me too, you know. Are you doing something different than Salem, like, I can't control what Salem does, or.
Right.
So.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking, right, those kids that come to school anyway, right, and it's, um. You know, it's. Closed presumably because of weather and now these kids are, I don't know, driving themselves or.
Well, we was looking at the, the safety aspect of things, again, that last closure was because of, you know, an artery that, but there's workarounds too. So, uh, but it, it worked for so many years and we never had an issue and all of a sudden we were having issues. It's never been the way it is right now, so.
Moving on, any questions for Annalise? Mariana?
Um, no, I, I covered, I already gave it with the projections, um.
Uh, we had triple A today. These, I know, bills.
Not here. We just discussed, um, briefly, um, you know, some proposed changes for some of our revenue programming, we didn't really go into much detail because we're. Actually have a meeting on the calendar tomorrow to firm up some changes, um, but just looking, we hadn't had a rate increase last year, so almost likely a rate increase will be coming. Um, for this next year as well as maybe some extension, slight extension to the programming. Um, to accommodate for our older, um. Students who might not necessarily be making the K transition due to the changes in the legislation, so. Just want to make sure that we're making those changes in tandem with creative, um. And ensuring that we're trying to stay as parallel as possible with our different integrated, or excuse me, our different pre-K programs. So more information on that to come, that was one of our agenda items this evening, and then we reviewed, um, the outcomes of our most recent district-wide culture and climate committee meeting, um. Bill's been really active in terms of helping to support planning and facilitating that meeting, we had a really successful meeting on the eleventh. Where folks started to dig into the data a little bit, um, by stakeholder group and identify what's going well, where do we need to, um, focus and then also. Are we asking the right questions? Because part of this committee is the intended outcome is for them to help us develop the questions that are going to be most aligned to our stakeholder groups. Some of the feedback we got from groups, previous surveys is that, you know, the staff survey is really geared towards teachers, so custodians, nurses. Parents, they just don't feel as though the questions really relate to them, they're less interested in completing the survey, we don't want that, we really want it to be. Responsive to all of our stakeholder groups, even if it has to be a different survey for each of those groups, so, um, that work is continuing. We're gonna add, um, sort of an in-between meeting because we're frankly running out of time. The hour that we have with the committee flies by, um, and we just won't have enough time to get what we need to get done, so we're gonna try to pull small group together in between. To help us continue the work, so talked a little bit about that plan today, got some dates on the calendar. On our next agenda, we're gonna talk about the name of the culture and climate, or the triple A committee. And how we'll integrate culture and climate next, we decided tonight, yes, we want to go in that direction, but we want to leave academics and activities too. So we, um, charging the group with coming up with the name at our next committee.
Really long.
Policy too. Oh, I'm sorry, that did come up too, so, so, um, because now of the legislation, where shipment should be. Coming out with a model policy for that, I have a feeling it's gonna be close to the policy that we put forward last year, but. Uh, we'll see what that looks like and I, we decide, triple A has decided to let policy sort of take that from here, okay? Bill said he might pop into the policy meeting, but depending on his schedule. Why am I looking at you?
Because I asked a question.
So, listening, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But that will definitely be, we'll, we'll, we'll most certainly want to, you know, address that this year and have that in place for next year, we'll be ready.
Jamie came up.
Cave update, we had a Board of Directors Retreat this week, um, we worked on our goals. Um, we have another Board of Directors meeting, regular meeting in two weeks, but we're gonna work on refining our goals, but during our goal discussion, we talked about the reading program. Um, and our legislative breakfast was not the only legislative breakfast that went badly with the state senator. Um, Greenwich had Senator Miller and she basically echoed all of the sentiments of Ms. Austin at our breakfast. Um, we were talking about having a second legislative breakfast later in the year. Um, to talk about, to talk to the representatives and our senators on how it's going. Like, because we usually do it before they start their legislation session, so maybe doing a follow-up with them, middle of the year at the end, just see how it's going, how it went, how we can help. But there is a. Webinar Wednesday. On advocacy on the twenty-fourth. Um, and they're, they've already scheduled a day on the Hill for March fourteenth. Um, so I don't know if we want to get our students out there, like a current events class for a field trip or something. Um, but if we schedule something, we could always reach out to Ms. Cheeseman or Martha Marks or whoever our representatives are that want to meet with us up there and schedule some meetings. Maybe get our kids on like the floor or something to talk with some people about the fourteenth.
It's a shorter session.
And this is a short session.
For this, so it's, it starts February seventh, I think it is.
But that is Kate.
Thanks, um, and I did go to my first learn meeting last. Track, um, really interesting, it's gonna be really helpful and in the future I'll bring. Um, similar to the Jamie here is cave across districts, I'll hear. Things at learn across the districts that are. It's pretty broad, I think it's from Gilford all the way through. Arlington, um, here, so it's a broad mix, I think there's twenty-five different. Twenty-seven different, um, districts or potential districts that are on, including. Regional, uh, pieces as well, so pretty interesting conversations and as I hear more and do more, I'll kind of bring it, bring more to the team, but I'm. Happy to be part of that and learning more about learn. Okay, moving on, uh, board comments, future agenda items.
Oh, so, um. Just going back to what Jamie was saying about the legislative breakfast, um. Would it be, would it make sense for us to invite, you know, Representative Cheeseman and Senator Marks to our meetings, you know, just like we do with Selectmen, maybe.
The past with Holly and Paul Formica, they've come a lot.
So maybe like once or twice a year, because I know they, they have a full and like we could, that we can hear what they're seeing over there and also they can.
About that at cave and our goal setting.
Yes, so then I think I'll, it'll be, it'll be good to, uh. Have a seat with them so that.
Holly, it was like a recall with Thursday morning, so I'll mention that too.
I loved it when they used to come in.
Yeah, yeah, we give an update, certainly, we haven't done that since.
Since COVID, I think.
Since COVID, yeah.
Yeah.
Paul and Holly used to come in all the time.
We used to have also Selectmen would come in very.
All Selectmen used to.
Been a while. Good, thanks, that's fun, that's good, other board comment, future agenda items. Jill, was that a hand raised or just them are moving up, I couldn't tell? Okay, thanks. Okay, um. We do have, uh, need for executive session today. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session?
I would like to make a motion to move into executive session to include Superintendent Newton, Assistant Superintendent and Ms. Faziano for the purpose of discussing an administrative personnel matter.
So, second.
All those in favor? I opposed saying. And we are in executive session.